So don't start early.
I think you go home early, too.
The Republic. People might run into last minute. Yeah.
I think Jeff is coming, but he's coming the same way. So I wonder if he started up.
It was bad. It was.
So do we want to review what he's done? Or do we want?
I was just much forward. It's just. Right?
Yeah.
Let's get through it, then we can review it. I think that would be the best policy.
We really will.
On a large scale. That's not I have.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to include the residential in this at some point.
I thought we talked about that in the last meeting.
I did. We did. I actually think the planning board make that a town protected water surface area can be used for recreation, but that's it.
So we leave well.
Large.
Yeah, that's where you know. We didn't talk about setbacks. We started.
I think we ended.
Well, the history behind that is that any purpose.
All right, let's call the meeting to order. It's six thirty one. Um. Pleasant religions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united by the Constitution of liberty and justice for all.
We'll call. Lou Gulay, Shannon Snowman, Alter Goss. Lou Wance currently was absent.
Make sure to pull that mic right close to you so that we can hear the microphone back there, too.
Minutes.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as published.
What are we using for the meeting minutes? Just the work that we did last week?
Do you have that? Just as what's in the minutes? No, you guys should have got that in your emails.
Oh, yes. Okay. Sorry, I didn't do that. A second motion.
All those in favor? Approved. Uh. Updates with CEO.
Uh, I don't have anything except that I've received other information about taxation from private sources. Um, I'm still uncomfortable sharing any of that with you. Um, because it comes from various sources. The source that I've used so far is John O'Donnell. I have asked him to come to a planning board meeting. Um, he wasn't in the office when I talked to them last week, so I haven't spoken with him directly, but I'd like him to come to a planning board meeting or a council meeting, either, either one of those. And talk to us specifically about what he knows about taxation of solar arrays.
I would agree with that, too, because I actually did talk to Mr. O'Donnell this afternoon. Um, and did get some additional information. I think what needs to happen is we need to come together for everybody to fully understand what that looks like, because I think the phrases and the terminology on which we're using um could ultimately be skewing how um we're interpreting um the information. So I would encourage that also.
I'd like to ask Alan to reach out to the state and those people that have written this bill and have somebody come down here and explain it to us so that laymen can understand it.
I can reach out. I don't know if they'll get back to me. But I can do that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else with CEO?
No.
So that being it, can I have a motion to end the meeting and then we'll go into a workshop?
A motion that we end the meeting and we go into working session?
Yes, second that.
Was favor? All right. Where'd we leave off? Was the second page of the large solar systems?
Yeah.
And we completed ten. Oh, sorry. Solar energies must be designed and located to ensure access without reliance or interface with adjacent properties.
What page did you say?
What's that?
Do you know what page it is?
Uh, it's page two.
So the, actually, the copy that I gave you is an updated version. It has new page numbers on it.
So you should have a.
So page five, Alan, on that page.
So this is.
So, all right, page five B is where we go next. Ground mounted principal solar energy systems, minimum lot size and lot frontage.
Where's that? I'm looking for page five.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Got it. Got it.
Minimum lot size and frontage. Large system should meet the lot size requirements in the applicable zoning district. Large projects are exempt from applicable zoning districts, lot frontage requirements. The app, the applicant must provide proof that it has authorization to construct, use, maintain the excess drive required in section B nine. Low, um, below for the life of the project and to include a decommissioning of the project.
Is that subsection B nine still applicable?
Yeah, B nine is specifically related to emergency management. So having drives that maintain to allow for maintenance and emergency management vehicles to come through.
They're all right. So different than a backlot, right? You know, fifty feet of frontage be a requirement like for a backlot.
Thirty-three feet.
Thirty-three feet, okay.
Yeah, it says access. It should, it should say right of way, deeded right away. If they're leasing, if they're buying the land. And it should be uh access to the utilities if they're renting.
Was that you change something in number nine?
Uh, you're talking about the third line? In B?
B one B.
You want, yeah, one B.
So it says use and maintain the access drive required. So you're saying to replace that with?
Well, they need to maintain the access drive. Frontage needs to be deeded. Access easement right away. If they own the piece of property. Needs to be in the lease that it's. If it's rented or leased.
Wouldn't that say using the word X, we're using the same language, wouldn't it include that, though? No? We think it would include that. So it's a, if it's applicable zoning, the, the frontage requirement is the minimum frontage is two hundred feet of road frontage.
But if it's.
But if it's a backlot. A backlot is thirty-three. So minimum would be thirty-three, but that's only, yeah.
It's just saying that they have to provide proof that has authorization to construct, use, and maintain the access drive required in that section. So as long as they can produce proof, then that's all we would need, right? Like, I don't think we have to be as specific to say deeded, do we? Because that, I mean, that technically could be their.
Should have deeded right away.
Right.
Backlot especially.
It's just saying they have to provide proof, so it doesn't say, you know, your proof could be the.
We don't need things happening as they are happening now currently with private drives within this.
They're not happening now.
No.
They happened before. They're not happening now.
So that, that's been straightened out?
Well, I won't let anyone if they don't have access, if they don't have the proper.
Now, but we have items in the past that had come back to haunt us.
Yep, but that was.
Because of language.
Yep. So are you, what would be your proposed language if we changed it? I would read. So I want to put question marks beside that and get language and come back to it.
Uh, we could, C has to meet backlot specifications of soul as a backlot. The town.
Must have minimum of thirty-three feet road frontage. For access.
Yes, and size. We have a backlot size area.
Minimum of three acres.
Okay.
We're adding that as C.
Setbacks. Large projects should have a setback minimum of thirty-five feet from the property lines. Different towns have done this different. I've seen twenty feet. What's appropriate?
Uh, this is going to be a standalone ordinance.
Yeah.
Leave a follow-up, so it can read what it wants.
What seems reasonable?
I would go fifty feet. That way you're guaranteed to have some kind of a wooded buffer or place the plan of wooded buffer and do have an access drive around the whole project.
Okay, seemed like a lot to me, but that, I understand your reasoning now. A vegetative area.
Now, you would have the vegetarian area that you can plant and do stuff in your dust. I'll have the access road to check out.
I saw a large one, another ordinance with a large that had a fifty-foot setback, and then the medium-sized one was like thirty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For your thoughts on, there's a fence for the project, and then you have the actual project. Uh, this doesn't specify between the fence and the array itself. Usually you have about twenty feet or so between the fence and the first, like, set of panels. I'm so just be curious what this applies to.
This applies to property lines from what I can see at thirty-five feet. That probably wouldn't be an adequate distance. It wouldn't be that buffer ability to put the fence and to build the road. You could turn an emergency vehicle around if you had to.
So you're saying, so the fence could be near the property line? And then you have the array? Are you saying you have the buffer and then the fence?
We haven't discussed.
What I, fences can go right up to the property line, correct?
They can. We always suggest that they can maintain their fence on both sides and still be on their property.
So if the fence was, say, five feet. Um, you'd have to be thirty feet. Uh, fifty, you said fifty, it's be forty-five feet. To look for a solar panel.
Well, you could also have twenty feet of vegetation of the fence and then the access road.
Yeah.
So you might just specify to whatever distance you decide on is to the array structure or equipment, but excluding fences. Might be my suggestion, just to clarify that.
So you're talking about minimum setback for array from property line?
Right.
So we could spell that right out.
Um, and access drive, you'll typically have it up the middle of the array, but you'll always leave, you know, fifteen or twenty feet. Um, at least around the array for uh maintenance and whatnot for vegetation.
Yeah, so there's two in here, two different ordinances, setbacks. This one says structures. Um, shall be setback a minimum of fifty feet from the side and rear property lines and need the front setback requirements for structures within the zoning district. And this one says for ground mounted shall not be located in front yards and residential zoning, so that's more residential, I guess. Um, unless they are sighted at least fifty feet from the front property lines. So that's residential. Let's see what it says for.
The current setback for structures is fifty-five feet from the center line of the road. Just so you know.
So fifty all around would be pretty much.
So we're going with fifty?
Yes.
Minimum of fifty feet from the property lines to any solar panel? Yes. Sound good? No good?
It's all right.
Yeah, you want to spell out that fifty feet, how it should be done. It has to be at least a twenty-foot buffer left.
You want to say something? Well, you want, yeah, you want to say a twenty-foot vegetative?
Twenty-foot vegetated buffer. Fence go after that.
So explain that to me.
There would be twenty feet from the property line that would be left vegetated.
So property line to twenty feet will all be vegetative?
Correct.
The fence could go on either side of that, though, right?
The fence has to go in some, someplace within that twenty feet. Front or back.
It could go on the property line or it could go after the vegetation.
Might be better if it went after.
Yeah, I would think it'd be their choice.
Lot easier to take care of something, not walking on somebody else's property.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're gonna, if, you know, I think that's a good idea, the twenty-foot vegetative buffer than the fence. If you're gonna do that, I might recommend going with the thirty-five feet they have in the Winslow ordinance. Because basically, once you have the vegetative buffer in there, I think that takes care of the visual piece. Um, and then you really only need fifteen feet for maintenance, so that allows a physically larger array, which will, you know, generate more tax revenue for the town. Well, be my two cents.
With a, with a fire truck.
Or remember, then the fire department said they don't need to get to every corner of that array. They're gonna put, they're gonna, it's not gonna be a typical firefighting situation. But they don't need to get to every corner of the array.
I, I would think if you had a fire involved in one of these things, would you want to be putting water all over the place?
No, I mean, they probably use a foam or something, but generally fire truck access is, you know, usually there's an access drive with a hammerhead for a turnaround. All your big equipment is placed near that. Um, but once you get out into the array, it's not practical to have, you know, fire truck access all the way around.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's not an actual drive around the perimeter of the array. It is a field.
Maintenance.
It's, it's a field, you know, you wouldn't go out there in mud season, per se. Um, you know, you'd go out there with, um, you know, generally people walk or some type of golf cart or ATV to access the perimeter, so.
Some places do bush hog, then be there.
Twice, twice a year. Yep.
Yeah.
Brush hog that.
And it would also, with emergency vehicles, we have a, a UTV that would be able to get down into those corners.
Yeah, because the only purpose behind for the fire piece, I thought we talked about this when we proved the last one, was that just to really be able to protect the butters, right? Nothing within confines of that fencing, so.
Yep.
And again, this would satisfy that.
Yeah, I agree.
So thirty-five or fifty, fifty still.
Still thinking fifty.
Okay. So shall have a twenty-foot vegetative buffer from the property line. Then the fence, comma, then an additional. How many feet?
So it'd be thirty feet from there.
How do I say that differently instead of then the fence? Buffer from the property line.
Buffer within fence lines, twenty feet external from the fence lines. That be sufficient? Like twenty-foot buffer and thirty foot.
That doesn't sound simple. Okay, okay. So say it again.
Thirty feet within.
Shall have, so a whole sentence, so shall have a shall have a what?
Thirty feet.
Thirty foot?
Yeah.
Thirty foot, tell me again.
And call it a buffer. From a raise, is that what it would be? Thirty foot buffer, I guess.
From the property line?
Hold on.
No.
No, that's, yeah, that's what we're not, what we're trying to say.
Solar array panels can be no closer than thirty, fifty feet to the property line. There'll be a twenty-foot vegetative area from the property line inward. And the fence will be located after the twenty feet vegetated area. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Do we want to add plantings in here? If necessary. If necessary.
Oh.
Plantings for.
Fine.
Burns. Plantings, vegetated area. So the rays aren't seen. And or none of their reflectiveness would be cast upon other buildings.
I thought we could solve for that through the fencing. Weren't you mentioning that before during the last meeting that we might have a solve for that? Where we don't technically see the arrays through some certain kind of fencing. I know you told us what that was.
Um, yes, this is, I think. Want to be careful not to make a requirement that creates an expensive add to the project where nobody's ever going to see it. Um, so I think, you know, referencing a residence or a resident, residential area might be important here. Um, but yeah, I mean, at the end of the day. Lots of different solutions exist to um. To have fencing that you can't see through. You know, a, a wildlife fence, which is the most common, isn't going to do it. I think that part of the idea with your vegetative buffer is to, you know, uh, create that visual block. Um, but yes, there are, you know, there are chain link fences where you, they have inserts that you can put in them. Um, that create a visual block to the array. Um, so you might specify something along those lines if, if that was your goal. But um. It would be a shame to require that around an entire array. Um, if there are only a, you know, a couple residences on, you know, maybe a small portion of it. And that's just, you know, speaking from the. Financeability uh, perspective of our project. So that's my, my input there.
I would just natural visit vegetation.
How about line of sight if there's a house involved?
Okay.
Shielding any.
Any line of.
Shielding any line of sight for a home?
For a home. Whether it be natural or man-made. Can be buffers, burns. Fencing. Trees. Or a combination of any of the above.
What, what if that home has a second story? It, it becomes very prohibitive. I guess is my concern.
The right location to put the solar project.
That doesn't help. So our question. So shielding any line of sight visibility of home. Yeah. Or. Street, road, not just a home.
Well, it's not necessarily a, the height of the fence that would be. It'd be a location of the array within the property boundaries. It would be leaving more of a vegetated area on the outskirts. So that there is a, really no direct line of sight. You know, all common sense things, I think.
Yeah, I mean, his point, we, what if you have a two-story building, but I, you know. I think that's getting carried away. If you had a two-story building, I, I guess from the upstairs, they see it.
What do you think, Shannon?
Uh, I'm really looking for something in other ordinances that call something like that out, to be honest with you. Cause I don't remember seeing anything specific about that. I understand the reasoning behind it, just hearing. From folks in the town. Um.
Shelley did a really nice job on that one, this line of sight, especially with one on North Street.
Yes, I agree with that.
And made sure that the neighbors had everything that was needed for them to be okay with having something of that size in their backyard.
Okay. So that dealt with discussing with property owners adequate shielding. From the, from the solar arrays, but it, I don't know that she was talking about. Two-story buildings. She definitely, definitely were talking about neighbors. And me were the code enforcement officer working with that neighbor to. Talk about where they wanted the shielding, where they wanted to buffer.
So each project would be specific to that project.
Could be, it could be, yeah. But I don't know if, I, I don't know if there's a reasonable adjustment for a two-story.
Uh, it seems, that seems over the top to me.
How do, how do you think about that?
I, I would agree. I mean, there's only so much you can do in the grand scheme of things in my mind. I think it's reasonable enough to say. You know, for like a one-story, obviously shielding it from, you know, folks that are living around that area, but. I mean, looking at a two-story would obviously be different.
Maybe you say. Fencing with a hundred percent visual block not to exceed eight feet in height, just so that sets a cap on it. So you don't want to end up with a fifteen-foot tall fence, because that's probably uglier than a solar array.
I see. I think we have a height limitation on fencing.
Yeah, it's really high. I think it's forty feet.
It's for mechanic calls prison.
I thought it was eight.
It's uh, a structure, a structure limit is forty feet.
Right.
I don't know. I don't know that I've seen a fence limit.
The fence is only eight. We followed state standards on that. Which was eight.
So we're going to add in there no more than eight-foot fence?
Yeah.
And a combination of things can be used in that aspect. You can use avaribides which grow slender and tall. And over a course of a few years will be fifteen feet tall, really don't get any taller than that. And that helps quite a bit. But it should be, you know, if you have a house that's involved, that's a two-story home, it should be. Worked out, worked out so that it's.
All right, let's move along to the next section. That's, we got that one complete, right? Height. Ground mounted lodge system should comply with the building height restrictions for principal buildings of the adjacent zoning district. But you, you're just saying that's forty feet?
Yeah.
So we want to keep this language?
So they can't go any higher than forty feet?
Yeah.
Pretty high.
Really high.
I don't think, is there, do they have mounts that go? You're getting into wind problems.
See, I mean, typically, these are not going to be anywhere near that height. I might, I can look up the specs for one of those dual access trackers, which you see around, and I would probably not. You know, keep it below that.
Most of these for the commercial gardens are not the dual access, right? They're the static ones that just stay as they are.
You get single access trackers, which in some positions could be taller, but. I can poke around and see if I can find some data sheets. I think, you know, you could easily go twenty feet. And not uh, create any havoc, but I think most systems are much lower than that.
I think we ought to throw a twenty-foot height of limitation.
Well.
How about twenty, twenty-five?
Of solar array being as tall as the flagpole within front of this building. They're just not that tall.
So we'll put twenty-foot height?
You can restrict it, like this one, looking at this ordinance is restricting it based off from your zoning. So one of them, if it's in a residential zone, it's going to be twelve feet in height. Um, when oriented at maximum tilt, but ground mounted, um, should not exceed twenty-five feet of height. That's maximum tilt in commercial, industrial, and diversified development zoning areas.
So you could do twenty or twenty-five? Yeah. All right.
What do you think, Lou? What size? Twenty, twenty-five? Who's, who's got the number?
Let's do twenty.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Sound good to everybody?
Twenty for overall height?
Yeah.
Even in a rural.
Yeah.
Ground mounted shall not.
He, he's saying they don't need to be higher than that.
Even with the. The time that doesn't get put up very often.
I think it's pretty high though, right? Like. I'd be like to like probably the underneath of my roof, right?
It'd be two, twice the size of the height.
Yeah.
Sometimes these in, in, in defense of these solar projects, sometimes they run into. Hills, valleys, little scoops in the land, and they want to keep their array fairly centered. Instead of just following the lineage of lane. So. That gives them an, an opportunity to not fluctuate as. At twenty feet. Most of these panels they put in in this standing. Um, the post of what, eight feet tall probably at one end and four feet at, or five feet at the other. Your rays are only three, maybe four feet tall at one side. Ten at the other.
Well, yeah, because you aren't trying to make it consistent across the board, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so that makes sense, but I mean to have like.
But if they run into a small gully, they may want to keep that same. That same height all the way across.
Okay.
Okay, so we got that then twenty feet. Impervious coverage. The surface area of the array of the ground mounted lodge system regardless of the mounted angle of any solar panels. May or not be considered impervious uh, contingent upon conformity to install water management plan. Required in section B five A. The stone water management plan is that that place should submit a stone water management plan certified by a licensed engineer. Demonstrates stone water from the lodge system will infiltrate into the ground beneath. Light system at a rate equal to that of the infiltration rate prior to the place placement of the system. That sound reasonable?
Yeah, Shelley did a good job on that too. She had all that outlined. So basically above the same.
So, so leave this? Sounds good?
Yeah.
Screening, ground mounted uh, system should be screened from view of any adjacent property that is residentially. Zone or used for residential purposes. The, the screen should consist of a vegetative barrier which provide a visual screen. In lieu of vegetative screen, a fence that provides visual screening and meets requirements of the controlling ordinance may be used. Sort of is what we were talking about.
Talks about.
So.
Do you want to leave that screening?
What do you think? You want to leave it?
I want to re, yeah, let's repeat it.
Okay, well, the government, let's repeat it.
I mean. Keep it as it is.
But it's also specific to call out certain zones. Again, that's residentially zone, so this is where I feel like we still need to like. Define, you know, is it going to be rural and general res or?
Yeah, we need to, yeah, we talked about that a little bit before we left last week.
Yes.
If you read on those.
But that, like under the definitions, it's a little different though, right? Like you have your business district. Right?
You do. But. There are areas. That is known that way.
Then we limit it to, we make it so that it's all zones. Not.
Well, we were not going to allow these in rural residential areas, right?
Uh, you said, you said.
I thought, I thought hard, I thought hard and long about that this week, that. I hate restricting things. For people to do, but then. Conversely, if you go to the um. What do you call it? The.
Land use ordinance.
Land use plan. Um.
The comprehensive plan?
Yeah, the town does want to keep it a rule. It does say that specifically, so I'm kind of changing my mind, following the plan.
That's right, I was going to bring it up later in the meeting anyway, so.
And it does state our ordinances are supposed to comply with the.
Yeah, yeah.
Comprehensive plan.
Uh, we can actually make this screening one. All encompassing for the town, because there may be people. Within. Downtown that may want to have enough land, that may want to put up. Solar panels, not on their roof, but standalone. And.
Well, that's a, that's a good point. If someone has a building, like the warehouse down here, and they want to. Decide that, you know, brace the building inside and put solar panels on top of it. How would all this comply?
This is.
This is a large, large scale.
Yeah, and large scale. Ground mounted large.
Talking about large scale here.
Yeah, that, that's a whole nother app avenue. That was the first section we read.
Yeah.
And went through what was commercial. And engineers have to look at the roof structure and make sure that, uh, and you know, whoever's investing in these arrays is going to have. Sense to go through that also. And not put money forward on something that's bad.
Uh, ground mounted. Ground mounted uh, wide system placed within illegal easement or right-of-way location. Of replaced within any stormwater conveyance system or any other manner that would alter or impede stormwater runoff from collecting any. Uh, constructed stormwater conveyance system. That's pretty straightforward. I think leave it the way it is. All right? Yeah, leave it the way it is. Security. Uh, all ground modern uh. All, excuse me, all ground modern licenses which be completely enclosed by chain link fencing. It consists of a minimum eight-foot height fence with a locking gate. Or as designated by CEO.
I'm gonna suggest we strike that word chain.
Do you want to require those, the animal fencing? Is that what you're gonna?
Require. Yes, uh.
What's the name of that, Jeff?
We, we can require the.
It's game fencing.
Yeah, game, game fencing, right?
Yeah.
The fencing that the Audubon.
Yeah, the one that progressively gets tighter as it goes up.
The fencing you guys.
So change that to game fencing?
Correct.
It's not just game fencing though, it's a specific kind though, right? Like there's the one that's like really just like these.
Yeah, it's really orange squares.
Progressively gets tighter knit as it goes up.
It's, yeah, which I assume like it's tighter for strength, maybe. I think the big openings at the bottom are designed for, you know, small. Small mammals to get through. No, yeah, I don't know why I guess progressively smaller, I would guess.
I think it's screening purposes though, too.
Okay, yeah.
So I think that was.
Whatever that is, is definitely the preferred. Um.
Is that what the New England solar garden used?
The, um, no, they did not. Um, but it's the autumn, that's the one that.
The Audubon.
Audubon, excuse me, was recommending.
So I'm just going to put Audubon fencing in there.
Nobody's going to complain. It's less expensive than chain link.
Yeah.
And does a better job, so.
There's places where chain link would be put in or need to be put in.
Like Oxford has.
The, the gate would get it. Um, some developers just use it for, you know, it is higher security if that's a concern. Um, it, it, it varies what people prefer, but um. I, I guess I wouldn't exclude any type of fencing specifically.
And, and standard options of put this fence six inches off the ground, I believe.
Yeah, if it's not a game fence like we're talking about, it should be held up. Um, I think it's like six to ten inches, something like that. I don't know.
Small criticism.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Want to be more general or? Say something about. Just. To allow game, game to.
Small wildlife.
Small wildlife to pass back and forth. Fencing that allows small wildlife to pass back and forth.
It's better language.
Do you put your fence, is the fence put up in, in a tight where it's broken every once in a while? Where there's like a twelve-inch opening?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
No, um, I mean, the, I, the, the fencing, if the. The purpose of the fencing is via the National Electric Code to keep unauthorized personnel out. Um, so to your point, thinking about, say, deer getting through. Um, that can't be done safely. Um, interestingly, if um. If we have a project where they require. And this would be brought out in to like endangered species, but um, there's like the Canada Lynx, um, they'll require. Um, like a log to be set in each corner of the array in case one were to get inside so they can get back out. But there's nothing to let large animals in. It's typical practice.
Are they put up with wooden posts or are they metal posts?
He's talking about a wooden rail they can climb up.
Both, I've seen them both. Um, the wood one's a little aesthetically, it's nicer. Um, metal, I'd say is more typical. But I wouldn't allow either, I think.
All right, let's um, let's move along.
I think we ought to provide for a bobcat run. At the corners of these fences also. Just like the lynx run, it's be the same for a bobcat.
And that, and that example, it was a known habitat for that, for that particular animal.
If they get in through the bottom, I don't see why they wouldn't get out.
Yeah, bobcats are going to get. It's the, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that. Yeah, if they get in, they'll get out. A clearly visible warning signs should be placed at the base of all pad mounted transformers and some um, substations on a fence surrounding. The large system informing individuals of potential repercussions.
Leaving that?
Yeah, sounds pretty straightforward to me. All right. Nine, excess drives shall be maintained to allow for maintenance and emergency management vehicles as a minimum. Drives must meet the town's common driveway standards of chapter eleven.
Now, I can just get rid of that. This is the last, like the chapter eleven, because we have our own specific things within our code, right?
What is our code on? Drives. You know, handout?
Not driveways. There's, we don't have any standard. Except for the, the cuts, the cut on to the road.
If somebody is putting a bat lot in that lot, that drive would have to be a certain standard, correct?
We don't have driveway standards per se. We have road standards. It has to. That I, yeah, that I can think of it. I don't think there's any standard just for a driveway. I don't, I don't check a driveway. I've, I haven't checked any single driveway.
Uh, I understand where this is coming from though, because I've had delivery trucks trying to get into the farm. I've had delivery trucks trying to get into the farm and I had a small driveway and I, and I finally had Scott put in two cullivets. So that trucks wouldn't keep, went in the ditch.
So I think I've asked Scott too about that. He said that they put a driveway in. He's the road commissioner.
Well, we had a couple of vehicles this uh, this spring that were. Hung up in some new construction. And the drivers weren't met, weren't made at that point in time. Walter, you think a minimal gravel base required?
I would think twenty feet, but.
With, how about a base? Sixteen inches of gravel?
They got, I, you know.
They're gonna, they're gonna put this stuff in, but doesn't, they're gonna do it. They'll do it in the middle of summer, they won't come back in the fall. Have a buried vehicle.
The, the Abcog standards address that and like the building standards.
Um, I'm looking right now in our.
Pretty start of the pretty standard to put in, you know, remove topsoil, put in gravel and. The mats and everything like that for access drives that we've done.
But you put in mats too?
Oh, it was a fabric. Yeah.
Oh, you put the fabric, then you put the, then you put the.
An erosion fabric, is that what it is, or is it?
Uh, you know, going, going out of my wheelhouse, but I think it's. Yeah, you probably know.
It's a specific landscaping fabric for roads.
Goes under the road base or in, in layers or something like that, but.
Yes, let's.
You know, there's, there's semis pulling into this thing. Um, so we gotta, you know, you gotta build the access road for construction. Um, so whoever's the developer is gonna build it to support that, otherwise you're just gonna feed yourself a nightmare. Um, after that, it's really just maintenance and, you know, that access drive is never going to be pressed like that again. So, anyway, so that's the practical perspective.
So what do you want to do with this?
I think the access drive ought to be twenty feet wide. No, it'd be a minimum twelve inches of base gravel.
Mike, you've had some experience with that stuff. Right.
Twenty, twenty feet seems really wide. It's not, it's not a two-way. It's not a two-way traffic scenario. I think probably, I don't know, twelve feet might be a reasonable width. Um, because you have your hammerhead, you know, I would, I would specify a turnaround at the end of the access drives, you don't have emergency vehicle. Vehicles or delivery vehicles having to back out the whole way. But that's typical twelve foot with hammerhead. Because, you know, you have your twelve foot of drive and then you may have drainage swales off of that, so um, you know, you're. The site is probably going to require.
Trucks had problems at our, at our farm. It wasn't with the driveway width, it was with going from the road to the driveway. And trying to make that turn.
Sure.
The entrance.
Yeah, yeah.
That's when they'd hit the ditch.
I compromise with a mouth of sixteen feet. And twelve inch base.
I think that's fair, because the twelve inch base is the minimum anyway for.
It's just a good base.
Could we check, we could check with the road commissioner about that, just about that width and get what he suggests? We could find out from him. You could ask him and I can fill that in.
And yeah, twelve inch base.
After the fact.
And some sites have longer access drives, you know, it's, it's, it's immaterial to the project I have in mind because it's very short anyway. All right, so I would look to what makes sense.
Number ten, if a ground model. Is removed, any earth disturbances must be graded, reseeded. That seems reasonable. Okay with that? A large.
Receeded.
With native seeds.
When I say native vegetation. A large system must be properly maintained to be kept free from all hazards, including but unlimited to faulty wiring, loose fastening. Being in an unsafe condition or detrimental to public health, safety or general welfare. It seems pretty straightforward. Number twelve, site plan review, design and operation standards for ground mounted light systems that occupy, occupies more than. Seventeen hundred and fifty square feet of surface area equivalent to a rated nameplate capacity greater than ten kilowatt DC. Does that line up with what the? Large scale is? In our definition? Or me?
I think, I think that's a limitation for a small scale. So I think. Yeah, I would make this be whatever the large scale thing is or.
Yeah. Well, it's the large scaleism, what is it, a minimum of fifteen thousand?
Yeah, I hope that's what we said, fifteen thousand square feet.
Yeah, we did, it's on the first page. So we want this standard in the large scale? Yeah. That's all we're working on, okay. That's quite a change. From what they had to what we have.
But that's one tell ten kilowatt system. That's a. Probably ten panels, that's what they're talking about.
And that's considered a large scale?
Yeah. Maybe that it got skipped in here at some point.
Yeah, you can almost end that sentence after the. Because it's already, the area is already defined elsewhere.
Okay. What do you guys think about?
What did you say?
Saying end it right here.
Yeah, in, in twelve, you could basically end the sentence right after the LSPSES.
End it right there.
Because it's already, the area is already defined elsewhere.
Yep.
That's pretty general in its characterization.
Let's uh, go down to this plan review. Keep going where we're going here. Site control, the project applicant, applicant shall submit documentation of actual perspective access. Control of the project site sufficient to allow for construction and operation of proposed solar energy system. These are items that need to be in the. Design and operation, right? So he's going to address site control. Operation and maintenance plan, the project proponent shall submit a plan for the operation and maintenance of the large system. Which will include measures for maintaining safe access to installation stormwater controls as well as general procedures. For operational maintenance of the installation.
These are all things that so Shelley had been covering.
Yeah.
That's already in our ordinance, you're saying.
That's part, yeah. The stuff that Shelley did, all of her checklist came right out of our ordinance.
Okay, I just, I just want to be clear, because, okay.
So do we need to go down through each one of these? Utility lighting signage?
Well, I think we need to probably look at them.
Utility notification, no grid. Did you have something, Jeff? Utility, no grid, intertie photovoltaic system shall be installed until evidence has been. Given to the planning board that the applicant has submitted a notification to the utility company. Those customers intent to install an interconnected customer owned generator. Off-grid system are exempt from this requirement. Lighting should be consistent with local, state and federal law lighting of. Of other paths of the installations such as accessory structures shall be limited to that required for safety and operation purposes. Shall be shielded from interface with abutting properties. And lighting of the solar energy system should be directed downward and shall incorporate full cut fixtures to reduce white pollution. Stop me if you think it's somewhat aligned. Signage signs shall comply with the town's sign ordinance. A sign should be required to identify the owner and provide a twenty-four hour emergency contact phone number. Solar emergency system should be used for displaying any advertising except for reasonable identification of the manufacturer. Operation of the solar energy system. Jeff, is there someone always on call for these systems?
Uh, generally, yes, I would say, yeah.
A point of contact was established in our.
I mean, I, I can't speak for every developer out there, but um. Most that I know of have twenty-four, seven um, service agreements on these systems.
So if something's going on inside of it, they have someone to call and there actually be someone there.
Yeah.
Our two others have that as a point of contact.
Yeah, yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
I mean, because you can put number, you can put numbers on things everywhere, but if no one's there to answer it.
Yeah, yeah, so speaking for everybody I know about, yes, but you know.
That leads me to the next question. There's numbers on everything, but where are those numbers? Are they with the people that need to have? Are they with the police department? Are they with the fire? Are they with town hall? You know, town clerk.
One of these up ahead says the um. The project will provide an electrical schematic.
Right.
Of the project to uh, first responders, they have it on file, so I assume it'd be covered there.
Yeah, still.
You, you could certainly.
That's the schematics of the whole, the whole situation.
Yeah.
May not be the emergency call up.
Yeah, it, it could be on the Knox box, it could be in a.
But you would have to physically be at the location. So hopefully these guys are interconnected, they understand something's wrong before they.
Yeah, I mean. Inverter, you know, all these project owners monitor the inverters and can tell when they're making power and when they're not. And if they're not making power when they should be, it is generally a, you know. Automated notification that goes to the operator of the site and they would send somebody out to, to check it out. It's not, you know, there is not something that tells that operator if there's like a, a fire that was happening, which. Um, is, you know.
Okay.
Not common.
That does talk about in section G, we can specify that out. Yeah, utility connections, reasonable efforts are, as determined by the planning board, should be made to place all utility connections. From the solar voltaic installation underground, depending on appropriate soil conditions, shape and biography of the site. Any requirements of the utility provided, electrical transformers or utility interconnections may be above ground if required by the utility provider. Emergency services, light systems owners and operators should provide a copy of the project summary, electrical schematic. Site plan to the fire chief upon request. The owner operator should coordinate with local emergency services in developing an emergency response plan. A thirty-two hundred series Knox box should be provided and installed by the operator to be used to allow emergency service personnel continuous access. All means of shutting down the solar energy system should be clearly marked. The owner operator shall identify a reasonable person for your public, uh, public inquiries throughout the life of the installation. That cover everything? Can we change that from a, a series thirty-two hundred Knox box to a mechanic falls approved Knox box? It's fine with me. I worked in a factory that had a lot of large furnaces with high voltage, I mean, you know. And one day we had a fire and the western fire department came in. With hoses ready to spray down these furnaces, they had thousands of volts of voltage going through them. And the furnaces were heated to like fifty-two hundred degrees. How safe are these things if you put water, you start squirting water all over them, then we're going to get hurt.
Um, you know, that's outside of my expertise, but you know. If. So check with somebody else, but my sense would be if there, the unlikely event there was a fire. You know, keep the vegetation from the, around the array from burning and, you know. I, electrical fires, you either have a, I think a special agent to put those out or you let it burn out on its own.
Use dry chemical.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I do know people that are more educated on that point than I am.
If we hadn't had a foreman stop those firefighters, he probably would have fried.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go and hose it down and be standing in the puddle of water.
Can we add something that says the fire department?
Can we add something that says the fire department will be instructed on fire technique for fire technique and safety for specific components?
Yeah, that's probably in the, you know, there's a it says you can request that a emergency plan be put in place. And that's where you'd probably just outline the simple, simple rules around, you know, electrical fires.
So then say we have those rules and say we need something other than water to be able to put them out. Do we? Are we paying for that to be able to maintain that material on hand?
The fire department has that information. They, they have information that they can put into their trucks. So they can have it on site. So we would just provide whatever contact information and if we require a plan to be coordinated by the owner with the fire department. The, the fire department is going to say, well, we need to know what we put on where. And what we don't put on certain items in the solar array.
Saying like the material, like whatever, say it's not water that they need to put out. So yeah, they're going to have like an information card or whatever, right? Say what they need to do, but if it's like a foam or something like that, who pays to ensure that we have that in stock in the event that some, something were to happen? Are we putting the bill to make sure that that's in stock?
Do they have it for other?
Yes.
Businesses?
They have all the stuff they need for all, all types of fire.
Let's backtrack a little bit here. It rains on these panels. All the time. So the panels aren't really going to catch fire. They're basically a piece of tempered glass on the top and sands that's made into silicon form that in between. Nothing burns there. If there's any fires that are going to be created here, it's going to be at the transformers. Or the inverters, as it's called, that inverts the 12 volt. That's where it's going to be. And that's going to be right at the top of the
So I think where you're going with that is it really isn't going to be anything possible for it to happen.
No, they're more likely to have a grass fire under one of these panels, you know, than anything else.
Different than a substation. Okay, I'll buy that.
Can I ask a question going back to the live slash everything? With the one that they did up on Route 11. They're going in extensive amount of way to get to that array where it's being set up. Didn't we require them to set the right of way up to road standards?
Haven't stated that. Sorry about the rail of noise property?
Yeah.
Haven't stated that.
I know they haven't, but I mean, didn't we as a planning board require that to be road standard?
Shelley did have something in that that was to address that situation.
I can't re, I can't recall, but I'm sure it doesn't have tar on it.
No, there was no, it was, there was no tar. It was a gravel base.
Just the road standard minus batumus, minus tar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seems like she's right. You could say that, yep. Solar energy systems installation conditions, the owner operator should maintain a facility in good condition, maintain, maintenance should be shall include but not be limited to painting, structural repairs. Integrity of the security measures, site access should be maintained to a level acceptable to the local public safety officials. The owner or operator should be responsible for cost of maintaining the solar system, uh, solar energy system in any access roads. We just talked about that. Modifications, any material notifications to a light scale ground mounted solar energy system. Made after issuance of the required town permission required to approval by the CEO or and or planning board.
I like that statement. And that means any modifications.
Well, it says any material modifications to a large scale.
How about modifications to the plant?
Well, that would be a material modification, wouldn't you think?
I'm sure there has to be.
I mean, do we need to call that out? What's considered a material modification versus?
You can if you want, but there are probably a lot of different options and variables there.
Yeah, I don't know what, yeah. It seems too variable.
I know.
Yep.
So do we need to spell it out?
I wouldn't.
What happens if they decide they're going to make a they, they have a permit for two megawatt? And they end up producing 2.2 megawatts?
The way this is, we decide what's material. We can say that's a material modification.
You have to know it. They don't tell you, you don't know it.
If they're going to do something like that, they're not going to tell you anyway. I mean, if they're not going to tell you, they're not going to tell you, but who? Yeah. I think leave it the way it is.
I say scratch material and just put any modifications until we know what that starts to look like.
Okay, any modifications? Take material out of there. Any modifications to large scale ground mounted solar energy systems? Uh, and do you want that approved by the planning board? Not the CEO?
Oh, that's right. I didn't really wishy washy on that.
I, I think that ought to be the CEO's judgment. Guess there's some stuff we just don't need to be bothered with.
I, I agree with that. But I bet this comes back, needs to be spelled out. Because we left it up to the judgment CEO a couple of times.
Got kicked back.
And we got kicked back.
Yep. Planning board sounds good.
I think with consultation from the CEO, how's that sound? Only because I think we should know about it because if we do need to modify our ordinance aligned away because we're seeing some consistency with some kind of modification, maybe that's an opportunity for us to modify the ordinance if needed, right? But we just don't know because we don't know what this point, so.
Yeah, to Lou's point, we've had some CEOs that did not really do proper control of noise. You have something, Jeff?
Um, yeah, on the material modification, just don't want you guys to get stuck with too much work, but you know, a immaterial modification in my mind, well, material modification would be changing the road size and location or increasing the square footage of the array area. Um, but a immaterial modification might be, oh, we had to move a post in the field because there was a rock here or a table, you know, we had to take a couple of panels from this table and move them over to that table because of like a kind of in the field change. Or, you know, we had to use panel X instead of panel Y, even though they're basically the same. Um, but having it saying any modification is a really could be a very large bucket of things, which I think the intent of the material modification is you're changing what the project is versus
If you move an array now, that you're going to change your print?
No, so let's say not moving. Let's say you move a table or maybe the space between one array and another without increasing the number of panels in the array. Um, but sometimes, you know, things have to get juggled around a little bit. Nobody would ever notice the difference.
So you're saying the guy in the field will do it, just do it?
Well, you know, you run it through engineering and, and make sure it works and make sure it's buildable. Um, but if, you know, out of 10,000 solar panels, if you have to move six from one spot to another, you guys probably don't want to, probably don't care to know about it.
But that would give us a base though, by eliminating material modification and just leaving it as any modification, it's going to give us a base to be able to start saying here's what's considered immaterial, right? And so then we start to have that base. Or we can go the other route and we say, here's what's considered material modification, but right now we don't know what kind of modifications are being made. So I'd rather know all than only some because his idea of what's considered material versus what we might find material, you know, from a town perspective could be different.
So you, maybe you say that any increase in the number of panels or area panels or any relocation of access drives. Just trying to think of things that you'd actually care about as a planning board.
Might want to know, like your example of we had to put in this, um, X array versus Y or panel or whatever. Well, why is that? I might want, we might want to know that to understand.
I couldn't explain that way. If we put up the same amount of panels and it's panel X and it's a two megawatt system. But there's been some updates in the panel design. And panel Y produces 5% more electricity.
You, would you want to know that?
I would want to know that.
Yeah, see, that's where.
Even if it's the same, even if you couldn't tell the difference.
And, and everything, but your permit is based on X amount of megawatts.
That happens often. I would say every six months a panel has five more watts when you buy them.
I know.
So I
This is all based on the AC size, which is kind of one reason I suggested to do that because generally your AC size doesn't change. Um, but the DC size, it may go down um, because um, of availability. But at the end of the day, I think you get has built plant sets anyway, so you'll know what it ended up being.
So remember that that this, those changes are probably going to come through me. So I'm going to be walking through this project on a routine basis. And if every change comes to me, that's the, that's the avenue it's going to get to you. That could be a little heavy on my schedule for every, every change. I understand substantial changes. We've got to move the road. Okay, the planning board needs to know about that.
Well, even if it's less, right?
Huh?
You know, even if it's just a list to let us know, like these, you know, here's where that, I mean.
Well, some things that are going to change the way this, the layout of this is, we're going to bump this out. I'm going to want you to know because that's my job to let you know there's a change afoot and you need to talk about this.
I, I can see how you can break it very and I agree with you. I know I've worked on enough projects by other life that I know that can happen real quick. No, my journal is, is really fine and I think that's what's bothering.
And that's going to come up, I mean, it could come up to my judgment and if there are things happening that you find out about. Then you would need to hold my feet to the fire and say, that's a substantial change, Alan. They're adjusting where the road is, or they're bumping out this, it's supposed to be at this point. Now the buffer is smaller and they've gone out in this direction. What's going on?
Yeah. Their point though, we had CEOs giving out permits improperly to businesses.
Mm-hmm.
All kinds of stuff. We don't want that going on either.
I get it. I don't know where the middle ground is.
May, maybe it doesn't necessarily need to be approval by CEO and or planning board, but maybe just notification. I mean, not, maybe not everything like needs an approval. There is that still too very broad and basic.
But if you just say notification, then they can notify you and keep on going, whether you like it or not.
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't want to hold the project up for six weeks because some little thing that wasn't approval, right?
I've had projects held up for three months.
Yeah, you may have, but that's not something
I don't do. But it wasn't even my fault.
It doesn't matter whose fault. I don't want money here.
No. I absolutely know.
Maybe define the things that you're concerned about. Those get approval, like increased area. Relocation of arrays. But you know, a three month delay with like
Yeah, it's unreasonable.
To a project that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, full contracts.
Yeah.
Scare anybody away.
Yeah, it was, it was the difference between building eight houses and not.
Yes, Paul.
Will you be classifying shrinking of projects once approved from what you approved it as a major modification?
That's a major modification.
Yeah. How about if we define what the what modifications there are, put three different classes down. Minor modifications. Be moderate modifications. And major modifications.
I don't think we didn't break it down. I mean, like Jeff was saying, if we just put like the major, like what are the biggest things that we're concerned about with modifications that we want to know? Changing out of panels, obviously might be one that we'd want, right?
Well, I'd want to know if we approved the two megawatt size and the array comes back at the end of year producing 2.5 megawatts.
A change.
I'm just curious, why does that matter if the AC size didn't change in the physical layout?
Yeah, well, it's good to have information as to what's going on.
Well, having the information though and stopping the project.
Oh, I'm not saying it'd be stopped, but it'd be good information. You know, I think a readout should be provided to the planning board every year on what these solar projects do.
I just requested as built drawing set. Know what have, but this says shall require approval. That, that's what sets off alarm bells for me.
Well, and that's why, that's why I have the question, if something comes before you approve or apply. And then after it's all through, they like the role of two, two. The way they do that too is that it's configured in that lot way different than what we presented.
I guess I would consider that a major modification. On defense of the solar farm projects, though, sometimes these modifications come from places that they have no control over. And it could be a simple review by the planning board to
I think that's why they put in here by CEO or and or planning, CEO could approve it real quick. Phone call Alan, removing this array from here to here, why?
And if the CEO felt like it, they would notify you if it's a big enough deal. And that's going to go with the CEO.
Yeah.
Because there's no way around it.
You know, I guess you have to hire a CEO, you feel some confidence.
That's really a good idea.
Yeah. I think this language is probably appropriate. Will we hash it around? I think the CEO needs to, you know, be able to approve or decide what's what's appropriate to bring the planning board or not.
I agree with that. So we'll leave the material in there.
Yeah.
But that's still going to say that it's going to require approval. That's fine, I guess at this point.
Yeah, you know, and Alan does it with a phone call. You all right with that, Lou? No.
Not really, but
You live with it? Control of noise meet, uh, must meet the requirements of appendix B, uh, 1465B of this chapter. What was that? That could be a different section.
That's probably a different
Town codes.
Yeah, we don't have a noise.
We do not. Shelley addressed that in Jane, her reviews.
I don't remember that, but you know, it's standard DB value of these is 58 dB, I believe, whether
Yeah, right within, like at three feet of the piece of equipment, I think it's around 50 decibels.
That's the inverters because I, okay.
inverters and utility transformers.
Okay.
The, the panels do make noise, but it's only heat. It's expanding in the heat and contracting with
metal building.
Yeah.
Seems like at 200 or 300 feet, you couldn't hear them at all.
No.
Yes, you might specify any inverter transformer shall be at least a hundred feet from a residence or something like that. That, that drops the relative decibels down, but. or something like that. That that drops the relative decibels down, but.
I think we oughta shield the hum. Those inverters make.
If I'm living in a house, I don't want twenty-five decibels coming from one of these transformers all day long.
Correct. So vegetative area would probably break that up.
So outside that fifty-foot area, is that, is that getting out past that?
So, yeah.
That, the decimal rating is getting past that barrier, those barriers? No?
The the decimal rating is at the, so if you're standing three feet away from it, it makes fifty-some odd decibels.
So they're gonna be at least fifty feet away, period.
But the reason I'm saying stopping the hum is because of the large wooden turbines that make that consistent noise all the time. If you've ever been by one, stood by one, or close to one, you can hear that noise. It bothers me. I don't know about other people, but it bothers me.
Do we wanna do some kind of research beyond that, so the noise doesn't affect someone within? Cuz they're gonna, at least right now, gonna be fifty feet away with a buffer.
Yeah, I I don't think like someone living in a, a piece of property next to it should have to hear a hum all day long. I think that's unreasonable.
Mr. Sparrow saying that they, that they wouldn't with a fifty-foot buffer. He said that's standing right at the, at the.
Yeah, well, at fifty feet, you'd still hear it. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be at the fifty-eight degrees. It would be, was square the distance divided like two. It's a.
This generally, I mean, it's generally central to the array. Um, some designers will distribute their inverters, and even mine, uh, say a five-megawatt project, it's not on one inverter. It's on a bunch of small inverters, you know, distributed, either put kind of on one rack or distributed around the array. It's not a concentrated thing. But yeah, I'd say, you know, if you don't wanna read it to fifty feet, find the distance that you're okay with. Make sure the inverters are that far from the nearest residence. That's pretty easy to comply with from a design perspective.
Yeah, I think that's probably a better thing.
So the inverter's the only thing we have to worry about for sound?
The inverter and the utility transformer. Those are generally put down the middle of an array anyway, just because that's value.
So if you said there had to be two hundred feet from the property line?
Say it again.
Two hundred feet from the property line?
Inverters and transformers.
Yeah. Two hundred feet from the property line and or two hundred feet from the road? Yeah, whichever applies.
I'm just thinking some poor guy living in a house trying, you know, make, it's kinda like a Chinese torture. How about, how about, how about from residents, two hundred feet from residents, from any residents?
Well, I was gonna cover the residence part, I was gonna.
Road doesn't matter.
It should be, it should be screening of.
Yeah, road doesn't bother me. I just think of some guy living in a house next door. I don't think it's reasonable. He has to listen to hum all day.
I'm gonna hear it.
Inside the house. He shouldn't have to have a barbecue outside and listen to it either.
Yeah, I mean. You guys can do your research, but I think it's a non.
Inverters and inverters and transformers must be at least two hundred feet from any residence.
It will start with that.
Period.
Roof mods, uh, principal story, solar energy systems.
Did you do decommissioning plan?
No, we didn't. Decommissioning plan must meet the requirement of appendix C fourteen sixty-five B in this chapter.
That's specific to theirs, right?
How about if we do a decommissioning plan according to what Shelley has written up last.
So for October first, any system starts construction after October first required by the you know, fairly stringent.
So should we just, should we just reference the?
Yeah, we don't need to make additional rules, so must meet the requirements in the. Must meet the requirements of the main DEP decommissioning plan for solar.
Did we get that? To be.
Oh, yeah.
That new law that's coming to effect. I wanna make sure that ours is better than that.
What does a decommissioning plan look like?
I agree with Alan. We shouldn't be duplicating.
Oh, I I either adopt one. Right in an ordinance, measure it right.
Yeah.
Roof monitor principal solar energy system, the owner should provide evidence certified by an appropriately licensed professional that the roof is capable of supporting the collateral load of light system. This is pretty short. Device system monitoring rules are any building should be subject to an actual weight regulations specific to the principal accessory building within the applicable zoning district.
Does this get like cut off partially, maybe?
Uh, did it?
Yeah.
I think it's. What roof mounted solar system?
That are greater than two megawatts.
Oh, I didn't get that. That's all. Oh, I can look for the original.
I know, I was just looking at that.
We needed, we needed to cover residential anyway.
I think we did last time.
Well, we we covered, we covered medium-sized projects.
Oh, that's right. We, we.
Yeah, we haven't covered home projects.
But I thought that was just general, general code stuff we were gonna go. It doesn't require site plan review, that sort of thing.
There is, there, there are some things, maybe one for the small. I mean, this, I noticed in here we were reading tonight, it didn't allow be the front lines. And I know going up to South Paris, there's one that's on that back road there, he's put on the corner, it's right on the corner. Like the used car deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, really, I. I don't. I'm just saying, have something with homes and what they can do. Be very, and be very basic on it.
Yeah.
You know, you can have a solar, you can have solar power attached to your house, or you can have freestanding. Uh, it can be a hundred, a hundred and ten percent maximum of what your utility cost uh over the last two years. Uh, just something very basic. So if you're gonna have, the reason for the hundred is you don't want something that's so big that it.
Yeah, but maybe they wanna save money by selling it back to the people. That is all I got from the Winslow. That's what Winslow sent to me. So that's all I have from them. I don't have any other pages.
A hundred and ten percent covers all your metering costs. Well, our purpose was to get some of these light-scale systems for now.
One section where they're gonna look at is A three, A one.
Which is um a system constructed prior to the effective date of this ordinance shall not be required to meet the terms and conditions of the ordinance. Um, I think if it, if you're about, you know, if you're in construction and something changes, that's a little late. Um, you know, as a somebody looking to permit a project here, um, I would think that, you know, it, once you submit a complete permit application that's accepted, at that point, you're kind of not you know, you're, you're in before the, if your permit is in before the ordinance takes effect, and you should be good with that permit application and not be in or through the permitting process and then have to change aspects of your project. The, the AVCO requirements that we, you know, so um full disclosure, in the process of permitting a project here, uh, which is really not gonna be affected by any of this stuff. Um, and we do have to use the AVCO checklist um with the permit application, uh, which meets, I think ninety percent of these requirements. Um, I just don't wanna find myself in a situation having either a project designed and application in um or anywhere later in the process. Um, finally have, had to do a redesign because ordinance has now passed. Um, so we just don't know how long it's gonna take for this to get passed. So I just wanna throw that out there and let you guys figure out how to manage it.
Yeah, if he, if this isn't in effect, when he submits his application, it would just simply be Shelley.
Um, it's a little bit more complicated than that. I've, I have talked to Jack about it. There's a, there's a term that I am fairly familiar with in conversation with Jack, and that's a stopple. So if someone has reached an approval with the planning board of the town, which is a town official essentially, and they've been approved for a, for a project, and then things change, and now we say they're no longer approved, there'd be significant problems with that.
And that's not what he's asking. He's saying submit it.
Yep, so um I'm not entirely, I can't give a, a dead answer, a dead-on answer about blanket every, every application that comes in. If the application is in and going through the process, I would have to check with Jack as to whether they, at that point, and these rules came into effect, if they had to abide by these rules or the rules prior to that. I would check with Jack, because I don't wanna, I wouldn't get, I wouldn't wanna get in trouble personally.
Well, then my thought would be, I mean, luckily you've been in these meetings, right? So you're hearing it, and you're saying you're hitting ninety percent of those at that point, because who knows, it could be three, six months down the road, it could be one month. We, unfortunately, we don't know how that could potentially impact your situation, you know, except for to know that we're trying to get an ordinance for the town. Be my thought.
Let me try. I don't personally think I have any problems with this. But, you know, the, in theory, you know, if you're gonna strike the rural residential zone, a developer could come in with a project in that zone, get it permitted, get it approved, and get it three quarters built, and then all of a sudden the ordinance passes and there, you know, project is no longer permitted. Yeah, I suppose that could, this, as written now, this would affect those projects, so.
Oh, right now they can't move anyway, cuz they don't have the ability, the capacity, financial capacity to be able to upgrade the substation, right? So that's on.
Oh, that's the.
Substation can handle two large projects that are being built. One is in West Minot.
Right, I understand that.
The other one is on Ray Little Boy on Route eleven.
Right.
Those two projects, the space within the substation to handle.
Yeah.
So their projects have not changed physically, whatever the minor project is, it's gonna be approved as. And the Route eleven project is something with four point two megawatts or.
I don't have that with me.
That goes forward as that.
Yeah, I know that, but in order to upgrade it, to be able to get them to allow for their project to go through, they indicated they need other people to do that because financially there wouldn't be a benefit for them to run their project.
No, not the South Street project. That's going ahead and they have capacity, the North Street, yeah.
Right, but your project is being proposed in the licensed street gateway. Right, in a rural residential area.
Um, I believe so, yeah.
So you.
So it's, it's commercial anyways. I mean, I'm not a rural residential, but I guess to your point, uh, the project on the voice land could be shut down as this ordinance is written because it's not constructed.
But if you go retroactive, is that what you're saying?
Well, it just says any project that is not constructed must meet this thing.
Right.
So you might wanna change that wording. And um I think ideally, it is, you know, projects that put in applications or meeting whatever rules exist at that time.
I don't know, would we wanna do that, though?
I would say permitted, no.
Well, yeah, but even if they're permitted, they wait five years.
Right, well, that's kind of my point.
Well, that becomes another issue, because they've been permitted, their permit is good for how many, how, how long? Alan?
I'm not sure about these projects that are approved by you guys. So I know about building permits. Those are good for a year. But this isn't a building permit. This is a planning.
If there's inactivity on one of these projects, maybe that's something we should state, state out, is if there's inactivity on one of these projects after a calendar year.
One year is pretty short for all.
Well, cuz Jeff said he still has projects that have been out there for a couple of years.
They need to notify the town. And they can get an extension on that for another year. But it can't go on forever. Uh, yeah, but we work with state agencies, they, you know, they. Yeah, I, what I've read is the CMP has been, you know, year nine and some of that stuff.
Yeah.
And that's in normal times. So there's COVID as well. I don't know what that, I don't know how long these are good for. I really don't.
Well, you're gonna talk to Jack, maybe that's another question.
Yeah.
If you made them good for five years, that would be reasonable.
Yeah, I'm sure it would.
CEP and DEP and.
Yeah.
Five years, like a lot.
It does seem like a lot, but man, I don't think yours fly by.
But things change, right? And that, as we go through these motions, right, who knows, we might need to develop the ordinances even more. You know, and in that situation, it's your opportunity to be like, okay, like, this is not gonna work for us, you know, this town, or, you know, maybe even other towns. You know, you continue to go through these motions. If we say a year or two years, you know, you have the opportunity to be like, you know, I don't wanna hold that permanent anymore. Like, i- it just doesn't make sense, you know, whatever it might be. I mean, that's just kind of what I'm thinking. You know, two years, and then if he, you know, his project, he doesn't wanna go further, maybe the next, you know, someone else wants it.
And as far as a project being approved and a permit being granted to build that project, is any ordinance that changes can't be, can't affect that project, if I'm correct, unless it's a safety issue. Then it may.
But he's saying differently. He's saying Jack's kinda saying something different. It's like, honestly, like a case by case, if I'm understanding you right, as far as.
But once it's approved, there's, there's an issue on the town's behalf. If we say no, if we say this project's been approved.
Right.
And now we say it's not approved anymore, that's a, that's a problem.
Okay, yes, no.
So any of the projects that are approved, the five.
Right.
Yeah.
You know.
But it's the new ones, like Jeff's coming in potentially. That's where we have.
I think we should put the five-year limit in.
It's a limit.
Five year, five year.
And we could check with, I'll check with Jack, but I know I, I've gotten different answers from him. It's very, he doesn't nail that down for me.
Yeah, but the project hasn't been started five years after he's seen the approval. You gotta go back for reapproval.
The other question is, are you guys gonna put a number? At one point, you would talk about when you get to four in town or whatever. The number, we're only gonna allow four of these projects.
And where do those numbers come from? Who picks?
Cuz I've been looking for ordinances, looking where to say any town like limits the number, and I have not yet found one.
If I may, when I found looking at the ones that you guys were given, a lot of them regulated based on what their land sizes. They know the size of their town and knowing, when you were knowing exactly where the lots are to accommodate a medium or small or a large solar park, basically, in that how they regulate it. The requirement for the, you know, lot size.
I don't know, instead, instead of doing land mass, so it makes more sense to me to say total megawatts. So you're gonna have three projects that are smaller, or two projects that are larger. That makes more sense to me.
Committing it, but number based on.
Yeah.
You can with marijuana ordinance, we did with marijuana.
Would you do that with some B along or, or anything?
There are some things you wouldn't care about. There are, there are other things that you might care about.
I mean, if you're really gonna not let them enroll residential, if that misordinates. I mean, that's maybe an exaggeration, but it's not, the, the lot of projects that stop.
You're taking that out of context, right? I'm taken back. I'm smiling when I say that, because we have the Lewiston Street Gateway, we have the Pleasant Street Gateway, and we have twenty-six, the commercial use. And I would say that those, between all three of those, that's fifty percent of the land area within this community.
It's eleven and a half square miles.
I don't know, I'll look at that map, it looks pretty good.
This white is the rural. This is highway commercial, Lewiston Street Gateway. General residential, downtown business.
So it's, you know.
Well, the justification, Mike, is, is from the original request of the townspeople when they approved the rural planning.
Yeah, comprehensive plan. It is very clear about the ru- rural district in what it says in the comprehensive plan. I mean, it states it. And that's what this board is supposed to use. Yes, we have.
Well, what does it say about solar panel?
Doesn't say that, it talks about what the rural area is supposed to be, to keep it.
Does that also mean that then they shouldn't even have it at their house? You know what I mean? So that say that that shouldn't be at their houses too. But they can be on site at a house. Sometimes they're even worse that they're not locked, they're not designated to a civilian. You know, like, like this place you're talking about, where you drive up by, that's, that is a high floor. It's right on the property.
It's ugly.
So maybe rural residential, that should be.
It's things to think, consider.
What's that?
It's things to consider.
It is. Jeff, where, where was that section that you were talking about? I'd like to find that.
Uh, which one?
The one about the retroactive.
A three.
Yeah, A three, A one.
On what?
Page two on yours.
A three, okay. Yeah, got it.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I found it.
Um, there's one other comment I wanted to share. Guess my only other kind of critique of what's come out of this is, um, the application fee is, I guess, not in line with what you typically see for these projects. The, I believe the AVCO fee for their overview was twenty-five hundred dollars, which was, you know, having dealt with the dozen or so towns was already kind of a little bit of a shocker, uh, being high. Um, so I think, you know, the, I think you guys had decided on five thousand dollars plus some additional based on the system size. That seems excessive, and I think probably does not correlate to the amount of resources that it takes to review and approve those permits. And I think as an outsider says, um, we don't want your project here. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there, um, from a perspective of a developer and comparing mechanic balls to other towns. It's, it, it's a lot of money.
Well, can you explain why?
You know, I'd say other application fees range from, you know, maybe a hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. Um, just to put it in front of the planning board for five plus thousand to maybe be told, no, your project can't be here. Um, that's, um, you know, you look at it as burning five thousand dollars and maybe it'll work. If you're trying to get some money out of these projects, um, you know, maybe get it out of your building permit fee, um, and not stick somebody with five grand to roll the dice to hope their project gets through.
So what you're advocating is just, is moving that further down in this process.
Yep, and, you know, make it reasonable, don't make it unreasonable.
See, Alan, what would be the building fee associated with one of these projects?
For square footage?
Yeah, what would be the, what would be the permit fee that you would figure out from one of these roughly? Just.
Well, it's, uh, a new home is twenty-five cents a square foot.
So what do we use to, what system do we use here to, to charge permits for, for a solar farm?
I don't, I don't know. I don't have that.
We don't have one.
Yes.
I mean, make, make something reasonable, but don't charge five grand just to put a permit application in front of the board.
There, there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of variables, I think, that's involved in this whole process that we need to, to do and find information on. And for the time being, I think that is an appropriate fee in my mind, because what happens if the five thousand dollar application fee and so much a megawatt fee every year is the only fee we get?
Tell the council to approve this. And a five thousand dollar permit fee, they may not approve it.
This is true, but.
What, what fee do you guys charge if, uh, I don't know, a marijuana grow facility wants to go in?
Fifteen hundred dollars. It's much smaller business, too.
Yeah.
But that could be.
It could, it goes on a graduated scale, correct?
Yep, there's a larger scale for tiers.
Yeah.
Could be up to two thousand five hundred, I think that's the high end of that.
And then there's other permits they have to go along with it.
And then they have to do the same or equivalent through the state. So that's our, that's our fee. That's only the town local fee.
And what else do we get out of that?
Uh, we get an, we get an annual, um, and that's an annual fee. So we have a public hearing, and that's the, the places we have in town now are fifteen hundred dollar uh, permit fees annually.
And do, does the town receive any more, any more, uh, funds at all from that, once we, they, they pay those fees?
Taxable income on their property, on what they use to, all their equipment.
And that's it.
Yep. Property tax.
So it would be if solar farm comes in and we don't get any revenue from, from, from it.
That's not, that's not.
I'm not talking to you.
Thank you.
Then, I'm trying to make a point. If you want to be here, be disrespectful, disruptive, you can leave. I, we need to look at things, and we need to look at things the way they need to be. And we need to protect this community in the best way we can. And until we get the correct information, so that we understand that, I think we should go down this avenue.
We get annual revenue from marijuana places every year. Would we get annual revenue from the solar farms every year? Or is there application a one-time fee and that's the end of it?
No, that hasn't been determined yet. That hasn't been determined yet. Beginning of the meeting, we started out by saying we wanted O'Donnell to come and help us know what the taxation's issue is. And we haven't determined any of that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Can't answer your question, don't know.
Thank you.
I, I showed up a little bit late. Were you able to share the state law I sent to you?
I, I did not. Um, I'm not gonna share, I, I've gotten lots of information from different points, and I'm not comfortable sharing any of that when I've talked to John O'Donnell specifically.
Gotcha, um.
Yeah, I talked to John, so I'd like him to come in, because the way he explained it to me gave me a very different picture.
That's probably the best, and, uh, may, maybe my analogy for the, uh, marijuana facilities wasn't the best one. Um, you know.
I think we could probably.
Think more of a self-storage unit or a commercial building or any other commercial development. You know, these are, these are systems that don't rely on public water, sewer, EMS. It's, once it's built, um, it's, you know, pretty, pretty low impact and, um, I'm sure as you guys will figure out, does generate some revenue for the town on an annual basis.
So I will throw something just about the fee, an annual fee for the marijuana. That's a new industry. It is something that we, in general, question, because it used to be illegal, now it's permitted. And I think the annual part of that deals with, and wha- what that involves is, is an inspection by myself, police and fire at the facility. So those are ongoing daily businesses. They run, they have machinery that swaps out, they have to keep that updated. They're all commercial, so they do require an electrical permit from the state, electrical inspector. And those are daily operations. The difference I see with this is it's not a daily operation per se. In fact, I don't know how often, it's not very often that they're gonna have someone on site, so I'm not sure how, once it gets put in, it's put in, and I don't believe there'll be many changes for it. So if there's a annual inspection required, I'm not sure exactly what that would be. I don't know what I would be inspecting, first of all. I'm the town electrical inspector, and I inspect residential, single-family homes only. So if you're gonna have me inspected, I don't know what I'm inspecting. If the fire department inspects it, I'm sure they can inspect for fire and safety. But we do have a volunteer fire department, and they probably don't know a whole lot about solar arrays either. So I'm not sure what they're gonna inspect on an annual, on a annual basis. So I would think if you're gonna have an annual inspection, for whatever reason, it's gonna be with a licensed professional that has to do with solar arrays. But since it is installed and nothing really changes from day to day, for sure, it might change every six months or once a year, something may change, but I don't know what they're gonna inspect. That's just my two cents, just from a daily operation kind of thing, and what I would be looking for, for that, that fee we would be charging annually. Don't know.
I would think you probably walk the perimeter, make sure the fence is, is adequate. No broken lineage, no kids have gone through, cut the fence and decided to make a four-wheel trail through it. And or any of the other things, uh. Look for runoff, you know, make sure that everything is what it's supposed to be. You know, it'd be basically a, a simple inspection.
Yeah, but you, you don't inspect the substation.
No. But I don't go anywhere near the substation.
But we don't own the substation.
We don't own this.
No.
For what it's worth, we do, every developer does an annual, uh, operation maintenance inspection on the array, um, because it's really important that these things all work well for the developers, otherwise they've, uh, thrown, uh, get some good, uh, resources away. Um, the town could require a copy of the annual O and M report, and we'd be happy to send that. Um, so you know CMP, uh, requires annual testing of their, um, kind of switchgear, or our switchgear that we install to their standards. Um, so there, there are annual checks happening on the regular. Um, and again, if the town wanted reports of that stuff, that is not a heavy lift. And we could even notify the town when we were gonna do that, should the CEO want to join. So there's, there's things that can be done, um, that might meet, you know, alleviate your concerns.
So Walter, you gave a list of things that you thought would be a good idea for us to go through.
Yeah, I was just running through it.
Do you want to go through that now? It's almost eight thirty, or do you want me to put these changes in, get you guys a copy, and you can get down through the list before our next meeting?
Yes, I think that's better.
Taking into account what's been said so far and, um, thinking over different sections of the ordinance.
Yeah. Do you agree, the better idea? You'll put the changes in, and we will quickly go through it. We do it, uh, you know, we can do it at our own time, at home, and then make sure we've got everything covered. Like meeting and quickly approve it, send it on.
Is there, is there the ability for us to at least even get Alan's notes in front of the council to have them do a quick preview before we even do that to factor if we need to make other modifications to it as part of our next meeting? Because I feel like that would be beneficial. We've already done a lot of work. We've taken on extra meetings. Is that an option?
I know you can't speak for the whole council, but.
No, I can't, yeah.
I mean, they're busy, too.
I don't know that it could be on the next agenda. I don't think it can be at this point. I think that the agenda is set for the seventh meeting, so it'd be for the month after that.
But I do have one question. Based on entrance, like. They, it wasn't a simple driveway open, there was a little road needed to be put in to get to that. Are you going to require the road standard that we have on these sixty-three? To be the same thing that's required minus the tar up for getting into these facilities? In order to make sure that they're safe from fire and. Including the heavy equipment getting. Because I'm pretty sure when we did the first one, the, the widget required.
To me, it seems a little over the top because these are roads that are gonna be used routinely. As a road would be where there are houses that would be used every day.
And.
Ditching, ditching requirements, that sort of thing.
And we've cut.
State road, they're gonna have to get a road cut from anyways.
Yeah, but she's talking about the road after the road cut. Yeah, she's talking about ditching and all that kind of stuff, which is important. Cause you get erosion and if you have water going in one spot or one place.
It's gonna meet the EP's groundwater requirements.
And we have talked about before, you've talked about the, um, difficulty in meeting the road standards for just a regular person. So when they have that road and they want more road frontage to put that road in, it's significant, significant cost. A, a regular person would not do that. They just wouldn't, they can't afford to.
These are low-usage ro- you know, roads.
They just, it's, what we talked about was just, uh, you know, push the lumicide, put a gravel basin twelve inches down. And you'd wanna, you know, twelve feet wide.
You want, you want, to Paul's point, you want to ditch properly. And Jeff is saying stone water, the DEP stone water standard tool, do that. I've had experience on my own property where people didn't ditch properly and other people did ditch properly. It's an awful big difference.
I understand they ditched very properly in front of my place.
So you guys could look at the, the outline as soon as I get to that outline of what we've done tonight and what we did la- last time. And you could add notes wherever you want specific things based on that list.
Yes.
And then come, prepare to talk, talk about the specific things that you put in for notes. And we can hit one, discuss it, make a decision, move on to the next.
Hopefully that will wrap it up.
Now, if he, if they have a preliminary ordinance that could be submitted to the town council on the seventh, why do you say you don't think it could be put on the agenda? Because it would be seven days before the meeting.
Well, there's a requirement for, uh, ordinances that affect zoning, which this would, to be posted in the newspaper thirteen days prior
Okay.
for the planning board to have a public hearing, and then the same for the council.
Why does the planning board have to have a public hearing when they have advertised last Monday's meeting and tonight's meeting as, uh, going over this?
Because the ordinance specifies it.
So they didn't specify what last Monday's meeting was or tonight's meeting?
The last meeting was to ge- um, I believe the chair talked about input from public to know about before they went ahead and started working on ordinance.
And tonight wasn't a continuance of that?
It was a new meeting.
Pardon?
It was a new meeting.
It was a what meeting?
A new, this was a different meeting, and it wasn't advertised as a public hearing.
I thought it was a continuance. I thought that's how it was phrased at last Monday's meeting, that it would be a continuance.
No, we adjourned the meeting and then we.
Went into a workshop.
I, oh.
Workshop.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Those public hearings be done together?
Excuse me?
Did the public hearing be done together with the planning board?
I think they probably can if they're duly notified.
Yeah.
It just has to be in the, there's supposed to be two newspapers, but there aren't two, so we do one. Um, but it's supposed to be thirteen days prior to the public hearing. Both planning board and council are supposed to hold those.
Do we put that in the newspaper for the moratorium? Do we have to do that, like when we did the moratorium, or no? Like for the public hearing, cuz they did the public hearing on the same time as the council meeting, right?
Um, that doesn't, that doesn't affect zoning per se. It, it's specifically about zo- any kind of zoning change or zoning map change. So anything that affects zoning has to do those, meet those requirements for posting. And a moratorium stops it for every, it just, it would, it's a blanket kind of thing. So it would stop it entirely, not for specific zones. It stops it for the town, so that's not related specifically to zoning.
All right, so to summarize what we're gonna, the plan forward is you're gonna finish up putting these notes, changes, and, and gonna forward it to us by email.
Yep.
We'll have a chance to review it, then we need to review it. The next meeting, make sure all the items that need to be in there are in there. And then we'll vote to approve it and send it forward as a planning board.
And if you can, uh, you know, if there's something that's missing, add it to where you think it needs to be and be able to explain that would be great.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn a workshop.
Yeah.
So, so given, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the workshop.
Second it loop.
I did, I made a motion.
All right.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Uh.
Apparently I did.
Chairman.
A regular scheduled meeting, which is a third.
Yep. Mrs. Stott, can you try to remember to go to the microphone because it's, you can't follow the video
Good night, everybody.
of those conversations. Jeff, thank you for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Plummer, I'll try to do that.
Thank you.